Good evening, I'm Alice Carlson, President of the League of Women Voters in Coos County, and I want to welcome all of you to this forum tonight, which is a voter service project of the League. I want to thank all the volunteers who helped put this together, this labor-intensive effort, and thanks to the City of North Bend, who let us use the North Bend City Council chambers. And finally, special thanks to retired Circuit Judge Paula Bechtel, who is our moderator tonight, and who I was standing in front of. I guess I have to stand in front of someone. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and our mission is to encourage the informed and active participation of citizens in government, to increase the understanding of major public policy issues, and to influence public policy through education and advocacy. The League takes political action only on issues on which members have studied and researched and reached agreement. The League never supports or opposes any political party or any candidate for elective office.
So, welcome, everybody. I will go over the procedures first, and then I will introduce the candidates, and then we'll proceed to their introductory remarks, and then to the questions. If a question is directed to all candidates, the moderator, that's me, will determine the order in which candidates will respond, and they will have, each have, one and a half minutes to respond to the question. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will have one minute to respond, the other candidates will have 30 seconds to respond. The candidate to whom the question was originally addressed may have 30 seconds for rebuttal. And the timers up front will have the little signs to warn the candidates when they're about out of time. Candidates may also submit questions to the screeners on the same written question form used by the audience. The question period will last one hour. Each candidate will have one minute for closing remarks to summarize their qualifications. Following the forum, candidates are invited to stay a few minutes to answer questions from individual audience members. And I'm going to now introduce briefly each of the candidates before they introduce themselves. We have one candidate who was not able to be here tonight. Daniel Emmett is running for Position 1. He wished to participate but had an unavoidable conflict this evening. He is a doctor of psychology who works as a clinician in private practice at Rivers Edge Behavioral Health. One of the handouts you received is for Vote 411, the only nonpartisan voter guide in Oregon. Mr. Emmett has posted campaign information on Vote 411, and you can learn more about him there. On my far right, Nathan McClintock is also running for Position 1. He holds a bachelor's degree in sociology from UC Berkeley and a law degree from the University of San Francisco. He has practiced law in Oregon since 1984 and in Coos County since 1994. He has been a judge pro tem for the Oregon Circuit Court since 2004, and has twin freshman girls attending North Bend High School. The third candidate for Position 1, Ginger Kralacek, did not respond to our invitation to participate in this forum. Immediately next to me is Elliot Adams, who is running for Position 3. A graduate of North Bend High School, he holds an associate's degree from SWAC in nursing and a bachelor of science degree in pre-pharmacy from Oregon State University. He is a registered nurse. On my left, which is your right, is Hira Khadir, also running for Position 3. She is an office manager at Bay Area Kidney and Hypertension Care and the mother of North Bend school students. She holds a bachelor's degree in natural resources from Oregon State University. The third candidate for Position 3, Carol Yardley, did not respond to our invitations to participate in this forum. She was appointed to the school board in March. And on my farthest left, your right, is Charlotte Hutt, a retired teacher, having taught math at the community college in K through 12 levels. She has a bachelor's degree from Evergreen State College in math and liberal arts and a master's degree in math education from Oregon State University. She is running for Position 7. Also running for Position 7 is Michelle Roberts, who did not respond to our invitations to participate in this forum. She was appointed to the school board in March. And with that, we will start with the candidates themselves introducing themselves, and just to make it easy, we'll start with Nate.
Thank you very much. Again, my name is Nathan McClintock. I'd like to introduce my wife, Karen McClintock. She's been putting up amazing this process and will continue to put up with me through this process until at least May 16th, and I appreciate that. I'm running for the school board because I really want to make a difference. I think I want to create the best learning environment for our teachers to teach and our students, our kids, to learn. As the judge pointed out, I've lived in Coos County for about 30 years now, and during that period of time, between my five kids, I've had kids in the school district, both in Coos Bay and in North Bend, for most of those periods of time. I've got two children now, they're freshmen in high school, and, you know, they're doing well, and I would like to see everyone at the school district do well. I've coached, I've helped raise money for the schools over the course of the years, and I've also, you know, been on boards, including when I first moved here, I was on the school board for a King Street Christian for a year or so, before my kids went on to public school. My experience as attorney, I think, makes a difference in terms of my qualifications. In my practice as an attorney, I deal with complex questions, complex issues that need to be solved, and we have complex questions and issues dealing with the school board right now that really need to be addressed. We have a superintendent who's leaving, and we have infrastructure improvements that need to be made, and we have disruptive behavior in the classrooms which is affecting the ability of our students to learn, and these are all very important issues that we need to deal with. And, you know, part of my dynamic here, or what I want, is to keep politics out of the decision-making here for the school board. So my 30 seconds is about up, so I will be quiet and let, I guess, Mr. Adams go.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I don't know who goes next.
Yes. Yes, I think that makes sense. Elliot is next. Your turn.
My name's Elliot Adams, and I went through my entire primary education through the North Bend School District. I believe that it's a community role to help establish and build a strong foundation for those who are ultimately going to become our own community members, and in order to strengthen our community, I think it's important to start getting them when they're young, so to say. And I looked more into, for instance, two bond measures that didn't pass, and clearly there's not enough support in the community because we live in a very impoverished county in the state, and it's understandable how there's a lack of resources that are going on that our community has access to and that can't just... Oh, man, it's kind of nerve-wracking. And so, it's, it's, it takes, it takes more than just one person or one group of people, it takes all of us combined. And with my experience as a nurse, I work on it with, across an interdisciplinary team, and so I have experience in working not only with multiple levels of management, middle management, physicians, other nurses, but I also get to work with a diverse array of people from the community, and it's up to me to, you know, acknowledge biases, leave biases at the door, try to figure out solutions that, that take all sorts of different opinions and walks of life into consideration in order to come out with, you know, a patient-centered goal, but in this case, the school board is a student-centered goal, because that's what we're all here to support is the students. Thanks.
All right, and Hira?
Hi, I'm Hira Khader. First, I want to be thankful to the League of Women Voters for setting up this amazing opportunity for all of us, where we can talk to each other. I'm a mom of three great kids, my son already graduated North Bend, who I miss so much, and then I have my girls, high school and middle school. I took this opportunity to make sure that I'm using my time in an investment which will last forever, which is our kids, our future generation, our students. I wanted to make sure I'm doing something that's not just for my own kids, but I'm doing it for all of us, our communities, our students. The more I learn about the issues, the more I get scared, and I was like, well, I need to do something, and I'm glad I'm on a path where I can be helpful. I'm glad I'm on a path where I can look at other people and learn from them, and instead of just thinking that, oh, this is what I want, no, I want to listen what everybody has to say, our teachers, our community, our students, administration, I just want to be the voice of everybody and then make a decision, because I know how tough it is at home, you watch news and everything, and you feel frustrated. Like you, I'm also scared for my kids. I'm like, oh, it's just every day I hear the news and I'm scared, and I just want to make sure that we don't, our community don't have those problems that other people do, and I want to be proactive and take care of some things through bonds, through community involvement, where we like, yes, we did our best, and we are a community, one of the best community, no matter how small our town is, but we can come together as a team, forget our differences, and work together as a team for our students, our next generation. So, yeah, thanks for having me here. Thank you.
Charlotte?
I'm Charlotte Hutt, and I wanted to thank my family and the League of Women Voters for organizing this, so that we candidates can let you know who we are. Thanks for being here. My name is Charlotte Hutt, and I am a retired teacher with over 30 years of experience in public schools, including junior highs and community colleges most especially. I'm also a parent, a grandparent, and I have neighbors now who are parents with children in public schools, and they encouraged me to run, and they didn't need to encourage me very much. I'm aware of many of the problems we face, and I have worked in many capacities in the school too, and I've worked with boards, I've worked on committees, I've been department chair, I've been department coordinator, I've worked with parents. As a junior high teacher, I learned how to do conflict management very well, and I brought it forward, and you know what, it works pretty well with adults too. I worked hard to become a great team builder so that we could solve all these problems, and I think what I can bring to the board is the ability to know where some of those solutions are. I also understand many of the regulations that schools fall under, and I'm very willing and open to communicating with everybody who has a stake in this, but most importantly, to students, teachers, and our parents. This is our future, as Nathan and Elliot and Hira have so well said. We really are in this for all of us, and I look forward this evening to your questions at this forum. Again, thanks for coming out tonight. I could list many other things, but I really think we're good for God. Glad you're here.
All right, now we're going to proceed to the questions, and again, the rules, which I will re-review, is that if the question is addressed to all candidates, each candidate will have a minute and a half for their answer. You don't have to take the whole minute and a half, but that would be the maximum. And we will be rotating so that everybody will have a chance to be the first to answer the question in order. And we do have questions from the audience as well, and I think I'll start with questions from the audience, because this is what they came here to hear the answers to, and we'll go ahead and start with Nate first. Here's the question. What do you believe to be the top three roles responsibilities as a board member?
The primary role of the board, members of the board, is to set policy for the school board, for the school itself. In other words, the school board is not running the day-to-day operations of the school, that's what the superintendent is there for, and that's why you need to hire a good, solid, capable superintendent. Someone, in our particular case, I think, needs to be very much experienced. So that is the primary focus of the board. But in order to do that, I think you need to communicate with community members, with parents, with the administrators and the teachers. And again, that's not micromanaging what the superintendent does, that's getting information which then you can take to the boardroom when we're discussing issues that impact the school district, and communicate those. And I think as some of the other people said here, we need that information from the community as a whole in order to make informed decisions, to know what to do, and you don't always agree, you may not agree with everyone, and part of being a board is putting up with that. You're not going to make everyone happy, but as a board member, hopefully the board can come together and make decisions that are in the best interest of the students and the teachers, and creating a vibrant community in the school district and for the community as a whole as well.
And Elliot, would you like me to repeat the question?
Sure, yes, please.
How do you, what do you believe to be the top three roles responsibilities as a board member?
For sure, one of the most important roles of the school board, and being a member of the school board, is hiring the new superintendent, who you trust to run the, to run the school district in general. And another role of the school board is to adopt and implement policies from the state level down to the community level, and then also are kind of the face and the, sort of the face of the school district in general, and so we're kind of the public role models of this position. There you go.
And Hira, you wish me to repeat the question?
No, I'm good. Just to disclaimer, I'm having a back cough, so that's why I'm drinking water, and you might hear my cough, nothing against it, it's just my major. So the top three responsibilities and the roles of the school board, in my eyes, is to be the collaborator of values and policies from the community to the students. So I see the school board as the middle person, who listens to everything the students have to say, the community have to say, and then they work on a plan, and then they produce the result, and then the superintendent is the one who implements those suggestions, and then we look at the goals. So that's what I feel like that's the most important responsibility is. The second one for me is to work, as a school board member, is to work on the bonds. Bonds are really important for our schools, for everywhere, and bonds are a part of the tax, the community, that's where the community aspect comes in, and bond helps schools, right? So it helps the students. So it's just like, again, a merger, where the school board plays a role, where it all comes together. And the last is to implement policy, state and federal policy, that as a school board member, we have to make sure that wherever the state decide, we have to make sure it goes well. So that's why I think are the top three priorities for the school board. Thank you.
And Charlotte?
Well, I think we're seeing this all about the same. Setting policy is really bridging the gap between what the schools need, what our community needs, and what the state regulations are, so that is a, that is a huge top priority, I think, because we can make a real difference doing that, because we can also set a positive tone there, which is number two for me. We are the umbrella organization for the school district, and by doing that, then when it's time to pass a bond, we can all be out there working for that bond, because we know that bonds are about buildings, and we have buildings that are going to need to have work. And then hiring that superintendent, because a superintendent does carry on the day-to-day operations, but most importantly, that superintendent works with the board, and the superintendent or the board needs to really use that superintendent, because that person is highly skilled and has studied for longer than any of the rest of us have, about what Oregon school laws and how schools work. School districts make hard decisions. We can take the heat for that budget and those negotiations and things, so I think all of us up here are willing to do that, and that really is part of that setting policy. We all know that it's hard, negotiations are hard, budgeting's hard, but, you know, the bond does need to be passed, and I am very willing to do that. I think I could have sold that last one. Thank you.
All right, and the next question will go first to Elliot. If elected, how will you represent the views of students, staff, and teachers that are different to yours?
I feel like I'm a relatively open-minded person, and I feel like I've got relatively moderate views, and I've got the ability to acknowledge what biases that I have and leave them at the door. I think that, that our community here, even though it's relatively isolated from the rest of the country, the rest of the state, that it's still kind of a microcosm of our nation in general, and I embrace diversity. I think diversity is what, is what this country was founded on, and that I think all sorts of different points of views are valid and are, that ought to be listened to and heard, and I think that every, every point of view should have equal representation, and that we should, you know, consider all options before making major decisions.
Hira?
So the first step in this process for me, for me would be to listen. I just want to go and make sure I listen to all the students who are involved, the teachers who are involved, the administration. I want to go with an open mind, where I want to listen to everybody and be in their shoes and say, whoa, this is what they are going through, instead of just assuming, well, this is what's happening. So that would be the first step, is to have an open mind and see what they have to say. I want to go and visit the schools, I want to go talk to the students and see why, what's going on, just to understand them, and then I would go through a systematic decision process, which is I want to look at stakeholders, which are the teachers, the students, and then I want to see what they would like, and what our board needs to do, what is our goal? The end goal should be the same, and then I want to work accordingly and say, okay, these are the students, the teachers, this is what they need, how can we do this? Is there a way we can do this? Or we cannot, because our hands are tied, you know, there's so many things, we cannot just go ahead and do everything. So I would go through a systematic decision plan, where I'll talk to the, all the parties involved, and then I'll make a decision, and so then I have a system to it, instead of just saying, well, I said so. I don't want to do that. I want to make sure I listen to everybody before I go through any process of decision.
And Charlotte?
I understand too that this is a lot about listening, and it's also understanding that when people have a different view, they usually have the same basic concern. You know, we all want safety for our children, we want high-quality education, so there are certainly ways to talk with people, but there's definitely ways to listen and to gather information. I did not run for the school board while I was a teacher. I didn't have time to be on the school board while I was a teacher, because there is a lot of communication involved and listening. I also think that the board, when they have their public meetings, we need to hear that discussion, so that we know those voices are being listened to, and views that are not perhaps mine, but are from other members of the community, are being shared in board meetings.
All right, now we have one question that's...
No, I don't need to change.
I'm sorry. Thank you, thank you, yes.
Basically, they are our constituency, the parents, the children, and the teachers, they're our constituency, and they're the ones that we have to represent, and we've heard about listening, and I absolutely agree, we need to listen, and we need to understand. Unfortunately, human nature sometimes is such that we, we jump to conclusions, and, or we have our ideas and they're the best, and that's not always the case, and we need to have open mind about listening to what people have to say, and not jumping to those conclusions. And once we've got all the information together and gathered, then we can make some informed decisions, because if you just discount what people have to say, off the bat, because maybe your needs are gracious, I disagree, but you're missing out on something, and you're discounting what they think, if they're not important. They're all important, and we need to listen to all of them in order to make an informed decision, and to make the right decision.
Now...
And unfortunately, you know, civility has gone a little out, out the window in terms of our society as a whole, and we're seeing that in the school districts, and I think part of what we need to do as, as board members, is have that civility, and that's part of what listening to people have to say, and not jumping to conclusions. My daughters have a sense, she just cut me off when I start asking, be quiet, let me finish, and when they do, they kind of understand what I'm talking about. They may not agree, you know, but they'll listen to what I have to say, and I think they understand better. I think my time is up. Thank you.
All right, and thank you for keeping me on...
No.
All right, so the next question is specifically addressed to Hira, and to review the rules again, you will have one minute to respond to this question. The other candidates will have 30 seconds to respond if they wish to, and then you would have a final 30 seconds for a rebuttal.
Okay.
If, all right, so here is a question specifically addressed to you. How will you handle a challenging and obstinate board member?
That is a really good question. My first thing would be to forget that they're challenging. If I, if I'm elected, I want to go in with an open mind and not have a pre-biased opinion about anyone, so I want to apply that, and since that cloud would be gone out of my head, I wouldn't even think that they're challenging, and I would just try to learn what they want to do and why they want to do, and then nicely I want to explain my perspective, and then supported with facts and figures, and say, well, this is what I pay because of these reasons, because I know these facts, I've spoken to these people, and this is what I take, and I also want to give them a chance to see what their perspective is, and then just come together and just make a simple pros and cons, and say, okay, this is what it is, this is what's not it, and just come to a decision, and hoping to understand that that person also understands where I'm coming from. So basically, I'll just go in a white flag and say, okay, this is peace, I have nothing against anybody, I'm coming with an open mind, open heart, let's just work together as a team, because at the end of the day, what we all want is for our students, we always put our student first, student first, student always, and I'm pretty sure they would, we also, right, it's about the students, our community at the end of the day, it's not about me and them.
And Charlotte, do you have...
Good question.
Yes.
If I don't want to rebut her, but I want to say what I do, is that okay too?
Yes.
Okay. So, the first thing I would do is see if we could get down to that common ground, and you know, what is the real concern here, if that might lead us forward a bit. But also, one of the first questions I'd like to ask is, what do you need to know to change or to move, in your opinion? How can, you know, what, what would make you change your mind? What might, what should we be looking at here? And I would be willing to look at myself to say, what, what is it that I need? What, what would I need to know? And I would want us to then start with that conversation, and then go out and gather that data, or the opinions, or, you know, work with other people to figure out how to get, move forward, because we really do have to agree, this is a team, and I'll do, I'll spend the time it takes to do that.
Yes. 30 seconds, 30 seconds goes really fast. Nate, you have 30 seconds.
The first thing is to be welcoming. Someone with that kind of attitude, you know, they kind of, they've got their defense, their wall of their defenses, and if you're welcoming and try to engage them, have them explain to you what their position is, why they feel that way, then maybe they will listen to you with an open mind about what your position is and why you think that way. You may not convince them, but engaging in that type of give and take will hopefully create a better working environment, because the board has to work together. You may not agree all the time. Time's up.
Well, 30 seconds is pretty short.
All right, Elliot, you have 30 seconds.
I think we all have a lot more in common than what... I think we all have a lot more in common than what, you know, society in general tells us or makes us want to believe. And if someone's being, uh, confrontational or challenging, that's a very broad and generalized, generalized kind of, um, scenario. But I think finding common ground and then uh, trying to find out, ul- ultimately, they're probably coming from, uh, from uh, feeling threatened to some degree. And so finding common ground help us both relate on on, uh, come up with a common goal.
All right. And under the rules, Hira, um, you do have thirty seconds more if you'd like.
Um, I just want to sum up and say I agree with my candidates. I'm already like happy we are all together working as a team. We have the same views, the same values. So I don't, I don't even see that it will be a problem. I don't think there will be a challenge. I think it'll just be a matter of working together and understanding each other and be a great team.
All right. And this next question will go first to Charlotte. And this is just a regular question. So you will have each, everybody will have a minute and a half to respond. This is, what are your budget priorities?
Excellent question. Well, I know that we need lots of things, but one of the things we, we for safety sake that I believe we need is, um, to fix our doors and and get our buildings firmed up for safety. Also, our special ed, I have a list, so I'm thinking and putting it in there. Our special ed department, um, really has trouble keeping uh, their aides and the salaries are rather low. So I would hope that we could raise some salaries there. Our facilities are average, I think, is fifty nine years old. Like, and we have a building that's seventy years old. We need some, some new facility. Um, we of course have repairs and things. But making sure that our children have the facilities they need for this, for the education that's taking place. The career technical education, um, needs new facilities at the, at the high school. We passed the bill, uh, where we passed monies for that and then didn't fund it with our bond. And also that drama center and other things that our students need right now. Thanks.
Nate, what are your budget priorities?
I I think people have to understand that citizens, the community needs to understand that, um, you don't make, um, significant infrastructure improvements in your schools. You don't build new schools on the money the state gives you to run the schools. That pays the day to day operations, pays the salaries, does the basic maintenance, the maintenance and repairs. In order to do those types of things that Charlotte's talking about, you, you, you need a source of funds. And and the only way that traditionally is that that's been done is through a bond. But you're building a school and making major infrastructure improvements. And I think we need to reach out to the community so they better understand that the importance of improving our schools, so they're top notch. So that people coming to this community and they look at the schools, they'll feel good about going to North Bend, going to Hillcrest, or going to North Bay, or the middle school, or the high school. And and that's important for the community to understand because it has a, uh, 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 an effect on the, the economy in this community as well. Brings in business when people feel comfortable coming in and bringing their kids to the schools here. Um, it's a beautiful place to live. Uh, unfortunately, sometimes people have come here, looked at the schools, and they're not good enough for them. Uh, they think they, they can do better, they move elsewhere. And unfortunately, that's a fact of life. And we need to address that. The only way to really do that is through getting the money to do the improvements in the schools that are necessary.
Elliot?
I agree. Also, uh, the infrastructure of the schools not only needs to be, um, you know, attractive to attract outside, uh, outside families to come in and feel safe with getting their kids in the school. But also the, the safety uh, of the students while they're in there. Water is a really important, uh, uh, human right for, for everyone. And we need to make sure that the, especially our water infrastructure in the school is up to, you know, up to snuff. Um, second, what is, is we need to make sure that we're able to, I hear that there's a lot of behavioral issues with the school. And I'm afraid of seeing burnout in the teachers and the staff. Because I've seen that at the hospital across the whole country, um, in the healthcare world. And, um, and and with, with, uh, the healthcare system, there's, there's been, um, we, we don't want to see burnout happen with our teachers. And as if teachers start leaving the, leaving the profession, then it's ultimately going to, uh, affect the children most negatively. And I don't think we can afford that.
And Hira?
Um, good question related to budget. My first priority would be the safety on the students, of the teachers, of the staff. I, I want to make sure that we have modern equipment. I feel like here we're living in the stone ages. We don't have all the modern equipment where other schools have. So I feel like it's time to step up and look at all the better equipment we have for the safety of everybody at school. Um, second would be the, making sure we retain our teachers. I have seen and I've heard that teachers are moving out of town, out of district because they're getting a different pay level. And I want to make sure I keep those teachers because teachers are so important. I mean, our kids spend such time with them. We need to make sure our teachers are taken care of, our staff is taken care of, and classified staff is taken care of too. I want to make sure all of these interactions are positive. And that's what I would do something related to budget. Another thing would be to help the students with CTE classes, whatever they need to excel. It doesn't have to be about academics or sports. There are so many other life skills, other resources that our students need. So just the end goal would be to see a happy student when they graduate and a happy teacher with safety.
All right. And now we've come full circle. So the next question will go first to Nate. Right? Okay. Um, so this, this question is, how would you address the different needs of all students? Including those who are houseless, LGBTQ, and those with special needs.
How much time do I have?
One and a half minutes.
Okay, um, I, homelessness is a, it's a problem in this community. And and I've been talking to some of the teachers. Um, uh, it, it is having a profound effect on some students that, that basically can't get to school on time, uh, because they're homeless. Or they don't get a meal to eat because they're homeless. Um, fortunately, there is free, free breakfast. And, uh, and if they qualify, which if you're homeless, you're going to qualify. Uh, uh, free lunch, uh, as well. But sometimes they can't get there on time for that. And I think expanding maybe the scope of that, uh, to help with those engage would be a good thing, a wonderful thing. In, in terms of, of LGBTQ, uh, uh, we need to be open, um. This is the way they are. That's just the way they feel. Uh, it, to, to criticize someone because they're LGBT, it, it they don't criticize me because I'm not, and I have no reason to criticize them. Or I think they should, they should be feeling welcome in our community, just like we're welcome in our school. Uh, my girls know people of, of, that, that are LGBT and, and they're, they're friends and, and they get along fine. You know, someone's sexual orientation or gender identity is such a small part of who they are. And I think we need to focus, and, and the school district needs to focus, and the students need to focus on, on, on who they really are. Are they good people? Do they care? Are they loving? That type of thing. Um, and, uh, and I think that the, the board has an obligation to, to make that happen.
I think with the, the poverty and the homelessness thing, I think there's a lot of resources in this community. Um, the, both North Bend and Coos Bay are very willing to rally around their sports teams. If only they'd be willing to rally around all of the students and step up for what's right. And, uh, and, and I think, I think this comes down to more community support. We need more community support, not only for, um, for getting more resources, uh, to the kids that have fewer resources. And we need more community support for speaking out against people who are trying to silence, marginalize these marginalized communities, uh, even in the school district, because the, all of these kids just want to learn and they want to be accepted. And it's hard enough being, um, you know, cis, heterosexual, like white, middle class students. It's even, I can't imagine how hard it would be for someone who isn't part of the, you know, status quo. So I think, um, I think it's ultimately, it comes down to the community stepping up and taking more responsibility with um, supporting these marginalized groups.
My first step would be to treat everybody with same equity. I, I want to make sure when I look at a student, I look at them individually, but then I also know they're a student. They don't have a stamp of LGBT or anything. So I want to make sure I look at a student and see what their needs are, how I can help them. Similarly, I've heard that a lot of students don't ID themselves as homeless kids. So we don't know. So I want to have resources out for the kids. And where they can go and talk to somebody about it instead of just dealing with this by themselves. So those would be two things where I would just make sure I, I always put them at students' word and not put a label on them. Once I have them, yeah, these are students, let's take care of them. That would be an easier path to see, okay, how may I help you? What can I do? Instead of just showing my opinion at them like, well, I don't think so like that, nothing like that. Just want to make sure I take care of them as students. And that's the only manifying glass I use up there. You guys are students to me. Let me know how I can help you. As a school member, what do you want us to do? And we just have to try our best in the end.
Your turn, Charlotte.
Hey, well, um, as a teacher, a, a long time ago, I brought the apples and the granola bars to class. Because there were services for our students who were coming in hungry. When a student's tired and hungry, they just don't do well in school. We do have some of those services now. In fact, a lot of them in all the schools, and I've been very happy to see that. Um, and I would also add to that maybe a welcoming person in the morning who's, who's making sure that the children are really being guided to where they, where they might need to go. So that they are served before they have to sit down and be ready to study. Um, and as we know, not all of children come in ready to study. Uh, the other thing is that, that I find quite commendable that this, that the district is following is the state policy for busing students from wherever they might end up back to their home school, that consistency. Um, I'm just going to share with you, I was a foster child. And I moved from place to place as my, as I moved from foster home to foster home. That was quite disconcerting. And it was actually teachers and librarians that saved me. Um, so that's part, part of why I'm dedicated. Um, I absolutely agree with everything I've heard about dealing with the LGBTQ community and any other community that is not, um, part of the majority. We really need to recognize what they need. And this deal, especially with poverty and children in these kinds of challenging situations. Thank you.
All right. Another question from the audience. Actually, apparently there were several questions, um, on this topic. And it's going to be Elliot's turn to start, right? Okay. What is your position regarding the removal of books from school libraries that a parent may object to?
I'm not a believer in limiting information of any kind to any student. Um, I think that there's merit in, in any form of literature, uh, whether it's opening your mind to supporting, I I think we should be very careful when we limit information to, to, to anybody in our society. And, um, so that's it. I, I don't, uh, gun to my head. I wouldn't ban any, any kind of, uh, information. So.
Hira?
Um, this is a great question because, um, in North Bay, there was an incident where a parent did request the removal of the book. And they had like a great system of what to do. They spoke with the principal and then it went to the board. And then they went to the state and it had, like, all of the process. So it was just, just not like, okay, I'm not going to listen to you. This is, so, so they did listen to the parent, they did took the book out. Uh, but in my opinion, it depends on what the book is. If it's something that doesn't, uh, is not to a special level of kids, then it doesn't need to be there. But I wouldn't stop. If, if a student is interested in reading a book, of course, go ahead. But then to put it out publicly on the kindergarten level where kids don't have no idea, it doesn't make sense. So for me, it was just depend on the situation, on the book. I don't want to put a yes or a no to any of that. I need to know what the book is, why they want to ban it, and then understand, okay, this is what we think. And this is what other people think. And take the situation like that instead of just listening yea or nay on that situation.
I, I'd like to spin off exactly what Hira said. There was an incident at North Bay. And that book was considered and it went through the process that the state and our board policies have set. And the book was ultimately returned to the library, but the principal did such a good job of commending the parent for actually paying attention to what their children read. It was a book in a series, so it wasn't a book, the parent was worried that some group or other had put that book to promote this agenda into the library. And I think it's really important that we make sure that no religion, no politics, and no lifestyle are being promoted um, in our, in our educational system, you know, acceptance and learning about something isn't promoting something. Um, so I understand when parents may have a question. I'm glad the process worked well. Um, and I think we can rest on that. And if, if something comes up and we have to change that, then I'll be looking into it hopefully on the board.
Nate?
Yes, uh, I think a parent has a right to make decisions with respect to their particular child in terms of what that particular child reads. And if we need to set up a system where a parent, uh, is concerned about what your child's reading, or there's, there's books they don't want them to read, have that child, uh, get prior permission from their parent before they can check out that particular book. But, but the thing is, is that if one parent objects to a book, that maybe I think my child should read that book. And it's, it's, it's educational to them. And that one parent or a group of parents shouldn't be dictating to my child what my child reads. So that's what we really need. If that's a problem, is a system whereby the parent has a call on what focus on his child or her child rather than just banning a book from the library. I agree with Elliot that to a great extent, you know, knowledge comes from reading these books. Diversity comes from reading these books. And if you as a parent object to it for moral grounds or otherwise, uh, that's fine for your child. But don't impose that on my child or other children who may not agree with you.
All right. And the next question will go first to Hira. And question is, do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
Yes, that's a solid yes. Because in the past couple of weeks, I've spoken to teachers, students, staff, and all of them, principal, all of them, to all our school district have pointed out that we need help in this section. We need, uh, we need mental resources for our kids. Because after COVID, after pandemic, things have changed. Our teachers or staff are dealing with something new that they didn't deal on such a higher level as they're dealing right now. So just to step away and close our eyes to this issue would be a bad idea. I would highly encourage that we do need resources. Our, our kids are going through stuff that we have never gone through. Us as adults, we have been through pandemic and there's still people suffering from, from it. But kids, this is so new to them and it's impacting their mental health because of social media, because they were stuck at home. There's, there's so many, uh, components to this that we definitely need help in that area. And the more resources our school can provide, the more better results we can see, the more happy students we can see. And we can see them excel, uh, just to make sure that they're on the right thought and they're happy. And then we do not leave any unaddressed issues before we leave our district.
Could you repeat the first part of that?
Do you think the school district needs to provide more mental health resources for students?
Thank you. Honestly, I believe the state needs to require to, to provide more mental health services to our families and our children. Thank you. Honestly, I believe the state needs to require to, to provide more mental health services to our families and our children. I speak as a foster parent right now. I had, uh, I had one child who was very, very troubled. And the school district is opening their doors to these programs to come into the school. Um, but schools take all kinds of families and children. And in Oregon, if you've been paying attention, we are. We're like, hate to say it, we're the lowest in, in funding mental health. And it's showing up and it's showing up in our schools. To the extent the district can budget for that. I of course would want the district to budget for that, but, um, I'm also concerned about budget. And I know that we have, um, health and wellness. We have clinics, um, and resources in the high school and out at North Bay. And I think that's absolutely wonderful. And if we can grow them and figure out how to grow them, I'd like to do that. We really need this.
Nate.
I talked initially, we're talking about behavioral problems in the classroom, uh, kids acting out, uh, and, and adversely affecting the other children's ability to learn. Those are the kids that need this assistance. Um, these are the ones that need the mental health, uh, uh, treatment. And, and anything that we can do as a school district, uh, whether it's getting more money from the, the state. Or otherwise to, to, to help them, the resources I think is, is very important. And but again, there, there are budget, budgetary concerns, but there's always budgetary concerns. Um, the mental health of our kids, and i- if you're having these kind of problems, mental health problems, you're probably not learning very well. And you're probably not being a, a, a. A student that it fits into the classroom very well. So, uh, certainly if, if. It, I think it'd be very important for the school district to provide more mental health treatment. And if we get the state paid for it, so much the better. Uh, some of our teachers might get. They will all the kids too, but that's, that's, that's more of a benefit session.
I think it's undeniable that our, our, our society and our schools in general need, uh. More mental health support. Um. Fortunately, you know, s- s- we don't want to talk about it, but suicide is an issue amongst all demographics across our country. Um, I believe there's been a spike, uh, coming out of pandemic-related conditions. Um. Professional mental health is one way to go about it. I think another method of improving mental health is through. Getting kids outside and playing in the dirt, hands-on activities. And we need more, we need more hands-on, you know, kind of, uh, play. Uh, I, I, I think, um, I think that's something that. That would improve everyone's mental health is just getting outside and, you know. Taking a deep breath, fresh air, getting your hands in the dirt and, um. And, you know, not, not taking things so seriously.
All right. And so then I think if I'm keeping track correctly, Charlotte gets to go first on the next question, right? Okay. And so the next question is. Tell us about any experience you have in negotiating with unions.
I've been on the other side from the school board negotiating with unions. And it, uh, Rogue Community College, what we eventually did is we came up with collaborative negotiation. Through a group we called the Paymat. And we had very good luck with that collaborative negotiation over the years. Um, it kept us at a higher salary schedule. I think there are ways that we can reach out to each other. Um, I also understand the board's part of the issue and having to manage the budget. But really looking at the, what happens in schools, it's the quality of our teachers and our staff and our administrators that we make the. Biggest difference. We do need those facilities and that is what bonds are for. But we should pay people so that we can retain them. We should keep training them. And as they gain in experience, they become better and better at what they do and our schools get better and our students have a much better chance. So negotiations are extremely important and I want to make sure that we were real, real honest dealers with them as we go through them.
As you, as many of you may know, I'm the city attorney for the city of Coos Bay and in that capacity, I've been, uh, involved in a number of, uh, negotiations. Uh, local fire union, police union, Ammon Aspie, uh, that's, and, uh, that, uh, we've, we've actually, you know, um. Uh, and I've also not, not just in terms of, uh. Contracts, but in terms of disciplinary hearings as well. I've also, um, been involved on the other side. My wife is a, a member of the, uh, the. Assistant District Attorneys Association here in Coos County, and I have assisted on, uh, a number of occasions. With their negotiations in terms of their pay structure in Coos County. So I, I've worked on both sides of it. Um, you know, I, I agree with Charlotte that, I mean, budgetary issues are always a, a, an issue. Um, you know, you, you, you like to give as much money as you can to the people deserve it, but if the money's not there, you, you gotta negotiate. And that's what the process is all about. But at the end of the day, uh, the best resolution is a compromise which, um. Makes both sides maybe not totally happy, but, but happy enough to, uh, to, 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 to. End, have an agreement and move forward. Uh, I think we can do that. I know there's some negotiations coming up with the district here. Um, important things to do. Uh, I, I, I'm not so sure that the, uh, school board itself. Uh, should be involved in those negotiations directly. Uh, that's really what staff is in my time as that.
Um, there, there've been, uh. There's a nurses negotiation at the hospital and now there's the, the non-nurses union at the hospital that's going through negotiations right now. And, um, I had, uh, I wasn't necessarily directly involved in it, but one of my understandings was that it took. A period of time and, um, and definitely compromise. Um, I think that's one of the, the layers of. Um, more of the hands-off role of the school board is that. Through the superintendent and then the cabinet of the school that. By, by trusting these other individuals that are in the, in the district to, you know, um. You know, fairly negotiate this, not only from the district's perspective, but from the, from. The people that are actually doing the job, like the teachers and the, the other applicable ancillary staff.
All right, and Hira.
Um, my role would be to be a collaborator between the budget and the other party involved. Once I go into a position where I'm negotiating with a union, I want to make sure I make them understand that I am on their side. I, I want to listen to what they have to say, but then I want to present them with facts and figures and say. This is what we have. I wish I could listen to you and give you what you want and desire, but this is our budget and our hands are tied. And just being truly honest with them would help them understand that that's why the school board is making a decision. It's nothing against them. We respect them. We appreciate the help. We appreciate the help they give to our students, but our hands are tied. Um, and just make sure that they understand that part and then present them that this is what we can do. And all of these things are negotiable and nothing is set in stone. Every, every other year, we have a, a, a budget committee. That sits for our ID teachers, for other, uh, other staff. So just to make sure they know this is not set in stone. This is a rolling ball. And we are here to help. We're not against you, but we are, you're here to help and our hands are tied. And this is why it is. So at that point, they will understand us and say, well, the board member are not against us, but their, their hands are tied. That would be my approach to union negotiation.
All right. The next question starts with Nate. What qualities will you be looking for in the new superintendent? And what stakeholders would you include on the search committee?
Let's start with the second part of that. I, I think in terms of the, uh, stakeholders, I, I think we need to involve everyone. Uh, the teachers, uh, administrative staff. Um, even the students to a certain extent. I mean, they have, I mean, they need to listen to students. That's who we're trying to benefit. See what they think, what they want. Uh, and parents, of course. But not stopping there, I think we need to involve the community as a whole. Is the, the more we involve the community in the school district, make them part of the solution. Uh, I think the better, be- better we often are in terms of, of that situation. Like what we're looking for in terms of the superintendent, I think, is someone with experience. We don't want a rookie. Uh, we don't want someone who's just coming in for the first time. We have some serious issues we need to deal with. We want someone who's very capable. Uh, we want someone who doesn't have a political agenda to, 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 uh, bring to the, uh, to the, uh, school district. Um, we want someone, um, who's open, uh, to LGBTQ. We want somebody who's open to assisting, helping with this, people with disabilities. Basically, we want someone who's going to be the superintendent for all the children, all of the students we have. Um, and, um, if we look at someone along those lines, uh, I think we're going to find a good, solid. Uh, superintendent that hopefully will be here, uh, for, uh, a, a long time. Superintendents don't traditionally last that long, unfortunately.
I think an experienced superintendent is a very good choice, uh, because it does sound like we've got a lot of heavy topics. Uh, I think that a non-political, non-religious person should be, uh, chosen for our superintendent. Because this should be a nonpartisan, secular, public institution. Um, I think that we should examine, uh. Like with any kind of, um, job interview process, why did you leave your last job and why do you want to work in our community? So.
Um, I would list a couple of things before I have that option of choosing a superintendent. I would look at them and see. How observant they are, how flexible they are in understanding other people's issue. And how flexible they are in stepping outside their bubble and seeing what our community need. I don't want to listen from them and say, well, in the previous community, this happened. I want to make sure they understand this is our community. This is our basic needs. We, it, it, it's really important for our new superintendent to have an open mind. A new perspective because what they will be wa- walking into is tough. They, they will have some challenges that some other people might not. So the, the new personnel needs to be responsible, needs to have an open mind. And just to make sure that they have experience that is good, but that's not the only thing. I just want to make sure they're observant and they have. Um, good skills to talk to people and understand from their side. Um, the stakeholders would be you, me, students, all, all of our community members. Because we, we need to make sure our students are getting the best of it. And everybody should be involved. And in the new search that's going on, we got surveys and stuff. And that was really helpful. It gives everybody a chance to put in their voice and see what the results are. So I feel like everybody as a whole are, will be a stakeholder in this position.
I agree with pretty much what I've heard. I'm going to stress communication. That a, uh, superintendent needs, will know the laws better than most of our school board members, probably better than any of us. And that person's going to need to be able to communicate why we do obey the laws, um, as we set policy for this district. And also I agree that they need to be able to go out and listen and help bring people together. Um, and very much hear what, what the heartbeat is that's going on out here. And at the same time, be able to meld that with what's required of our district. In order to keep our funding and, and, and everything else. Um. I really do want them to get to know what's going on in our schools and with our teachers and with our families and students. I want them to be the face of, of the district day to day. Um, so I want to be out in the buildings.
All right. And next question goes first to Elliot. Do you support or oppose the current opportunity in the North Bend schools? To earn college credits from SWAC through the dual credit and assessment-based learning programs? And why?
I support it because I think that, uh, as much as, um. As much as we need to help those students who are struggling and marginalized and disenfranchised. And, and, and the kids that need more help, that I think it's an opportunity to allow, uh, the kids who are able to excel, not to hold them back. And if they want to, uh, challenge themselves more and take, uh, additional classes through the, through the community college. Um, to get college credit, I, I don't see a problem with that.
You're it.
I definitely, definitely support this option. I am a firm believer in higher education. I, I recently finished my undergrad with a three point eight six GPA. So I, I just want to make sure everybody get the taste of higher education. It opens your mind. It just opens a new horizon. It just makes you aware of so many things that are around you that you don't see. So some of the students might not even get the chance if they don't have the option to take classes through SWAC, through dual, uh, program. And I want to make sure our students get their little taste of the higher education that's out there. And given them the option that, hey, guys, this is, this is for you guys. Let's try and see if it works for you. It's good. And if it's not, at least you have given it a try. You're not going to look back and say, well, I wish I didn't have the time to try it. And see how it will work out. So I'm definitely, uh, in support and I'm grateful that I, our high school gave that option. A lot of students graduate with already an associate under their belt and they're so proud of it. And it makes me so proud, proud that they have worked so hard in school where they were part of sports. They have great academic skills, great social. And they still have college credit. That tells me a lot about that student and I really support that idea.
Charlotte.
Well, I'm going to follow that up because I've worked in these programs from the community college and, and I couldn't support them more. And for the same reasons that here I just mentioned, uh, these students are able to compete in high school sports and, and have clubs. And do drama and still be taking calculus at the community college. I actually have a grandson in a program like this right now. It's called Running Start in Washington. And he will graduate from high school and have his associates. And he's already been accepted at the University of Washington as a junior. So I can't agree with this more. Um, I understand that there, that people see that there might be issues. With the schools losing funding or something. I'm not sure how that works at the public school end of it. But I can tell you, at the community college, I saw a lot of kids who dropped out of high school because, and they were gifted kids. They needed more and they weren't getting it. So they dropped out and then six months they ended up at the community college, but they didn't have their peer group. So I'm, I'm all for these programs. I think they, they are essential to some of our students for their. Great success, greater success in life. Thanks.
I'm a community college kid myself. My first two years out of high school, I went to community college before I transferred to a four-year school. So I, I, I'm, I'm very supportive of community colleges as a whole. Uh, uh, many, uh, school districts have formal tag programs, uh, programs for talented and gifted. We don't really have that per se here, but this is essentially the same type of thing. And, and, and I think as, as Elliot points out, you know, we need resources for those. Um, who, who, who are disabled or have difficulties learning and that kind of thing. But we also need resources and the abilities to challenge those kids who are capable of calculus. Or, or, or other types of, uh, advanced science classes, physics and things of that nature. Uh, if we don't challenge them, uh, they lose focus. And as, as Charlotte points out, some of them will actually drop out of school because they're bored. And we don't want kids that are in school that are bored. I, I don't see a downside. I really, I guess what it comes down to, what is the downside of letting these kids? Take some college courses so that maybe when, a- as, as here points out, you graduate with an AA degree. That means you've done two years of school. You only do two more to get your, your bachelor's degree. And, and that's a, that's a huge cost saving for the parents and that's not a bad thing either. So I don't see any downside. I only see an upside.
All right. Next question. And we're just about out of questions. Next question goes first to Hira. Would you support resubmitting a school bond for buildings and repair to the voters?
I'm so happy this question is here. Yes. Absolutely. Yes. The last time the bond did not pass through and I feel like this time we know. We are equipped better to work towards the bond. Personally, I think we need to make sure everybody sees what's going on in our school. Seeing is believing. I, I, I will encourage all of our community members to come and look at our schools like Hillcrest. Some of the doors are like breaking and peeling and like, uh, bathrooms are not such a good place in the high school. I've been to the bathroom, now they're. I've been to the bathroom. I'm like, oh, this is not good. We have so much that we need to do and bond is the answer to it. It's just unfortunate that last time it was COVID. It was a less, a, a lot of stuff happened. But this time we are better equipped. We can learn from our mistakes and then just go out to the community, just tell them this is what it is and that's what we are doing. And we really need your support. This is for our kids and this is not just for immediate. It's going to roll over for years. So your grandkids, your kids, it's, it's just a rollover thing that everybody will benefit, not just us, but it's a, it's a long generational thing that we will all benefit from.
Charlotte.
So, um, recommitting the bond for the same amount or maybe a little bit more, yes, not for anything less. Um, we need what was in that bond. We need safety in our buildings. We, again, voted for the career technical education statewide. Eight hundred dollars a child is coming in. We don't have the facilities. We don't have safe facilities for those programs and we need those. The drama, there's a, we need a performing arts center. As a person who has worked with children in public speaking, I, uh, when, I can't imagine taking my children, my students to a university where they're going to have a big amphitheater and they're going to be talking to people and they haven't had the experience of looking up at an audience. Um, and they're in a cafeteria debating. Um, the, the drama and, and the choral group will all benefit and so will our community because that facility will be available at night. I wish we could have built a new gym at Hillcrest because they needed 500 students in a tiny gym. Um, they can't get the kids through fast enough and, and that's unfortunate. So, and that wasn't even on the next bond. We need this. Bonds are buildings. And we have facility concerns. We have things to repair and bonds to build. So yes, I, I am highly in favor.
Nate.
As I mentioned earlier, the, the only way we're going to make these improvements is through a bond. I mean, if we don't have a bond, it's just not going to happen and our schools will continue to deteriorate over time. And the quality of the education our kids get will deteriorate over time as well. Yeah, one of the reasons I, I decided to run or I was interested in running is, is because the last time the two bonds were up, I didn't see any real emphasis by the board or anyone else to really push it. I saw some signs out, some talk about it, but they didn't really advertise it. There, there was no campaign as far as I could tell to really push it on the, so the community would understand why do we need these changes, why we need these improvements. Uh, I, I know we don't like talking about Coos Bay and Pirates and stuff, but they, they failed once and they, we went back and did it again. And they did an excellent job of communicating to the community why they needed it. Pictures were made. I think there, there was TV, some ads there, some video. Um, so that the community understood, we really need this. And if we can communicate that to our community here, I think they'll understand. It's not that the, the, the bonds fail by much. We just need a little more push and a little more education to the community as a whole for their buy-in so that we can do what's best for our kids.
I absolutely agree that our schools themselves need to be improved, renovated, modernized. I, I did sports myself throughout my whole education and I understand that a lot of the athletic infrastructure is, uh, has been updated through private donations. However, I think if the, uh, if community members genuinely valued the students and valued their educations, that they would, that, that the entire community would diversify their investments, not just in the athletic department.
And the very last question, we'll go to Charlotte. As a board member, would you be open to visiting the schools to listen and learn about staff and student needs?
I hope to be part of a program of doing that. Um, I think we do need to know what's going on in our schools. And as a board member, yes, I would be very open to going into the schools and trying to maybe sit in in classes too. It's a, once a teacher would approve, it wouldn't be to evaluate. I mean, maybe it would just be to get a feel in a sense. Uh, I would hope to be in the schools enough that people would free, be feel free to communicate with me. I will also represent the school board out in the, in the community, trying to be the biggest advocate you've ever seen for North Bend Public Schools. Because I do think that what happens in our schools carries forward into the community and a community that sees our schools in a very positive way again feeds back into the schools and our students get a better education. And that's what it's all about. A school board member is concerned about raising the quality of education in our community. So yeah, that is, that is what I would spend my time doing. Uh, and I never did apply for a position like this or run for a position like this because as a teacher, I simply didn't have the time. I have the time. And, um, so I'd like to put it to use, just being as dedicated to students and learning as I've always been.
Nate.
I, I don't think it's an option. I, I think it's a requirement. I mean, how can you understand what's going on in the schools if you don't visit the schools? If you don't talk to the teachers, if you don't talk to the students, if you don't talk to the parents of the students. I mean, that's the only way you really can get the information you need to make informed decisions as a board member. And, and I like Charlotte's idea of kind of sitting in on classes, uh, as long as the, the teachers don't feel uncomfortable. And, and as part of your job as, as a, a board member, make the teachers realize I'm not here to judge you as a teacher. I'm here to just kind of assess the situation to, to better help me make decisions as a board member. Uh, so it, it's not a question of whether I'm open. I, I don't see how you can do the job without doing that.
I think I mentioned in one of my opening comments about how one of the roles of the school board is being the role model for the school district. And I'd agree with Nathan that it would, it would be necessary to foster that community involvement. That it starts with the school board members going and spending time and getting to know how each of the schools work, getting to know students and teachers on a first-name basis. Going, going and attending, you know, theatrical events, music events, sporting events. And, um, and so that not only that the school board would have people in the school district on a first-name basis, but we become first-name basis and, and, and it would, the, the more the school board gets involved on a daily basis with the school district, that, um, it'll, it'll open up lines of communication, not seem so intimidating like, oh no, the school board or the superintendent's watching everybody. That we are friends and we're here to work together and that we're all, we're all working on the, the same common goal.
Hira.
I think this would, that would be the best part of this position to go and visit schools. I was lucky enough to be invited after spring break to go to one of the classes in like, uh, high school. And I loved it. Besides the fact, my daughter was sitting and her eyes were sparkling. She was so proud of me. I, I want to go visit the schools to make my kids proud, my girls proud of me. I want to go talk to the teachers and the students. The students are so bright. There's this waiting for a chance for somebody to talk to them. I, I told them, you know, in the school board, you're allowed to come. There's a public section. And they didn't know and they were so polite. They were so nice. They came over and talked to me later. The support was amazing and I, I was surprised to know that not a lot of school members currently do that. And for me, it's, it's not an option. It's a requirement. How will I know what's going on at school? I need to talk to teachers. I need to talk with staff and I need to see how the students are doing because I feel like they're all my kids now. I'm so proud of them. How can I miss on the chat? I want to go to all the choir concerts. I want to go out to their, their swim meets, their track meet. It's, it's going to be the best thing ever that I'll do in my four years going and just having the best times. So absolutely, I would do that in a heartbeat, definitely.
All right, we are ready for the closing statements from each candidate. I'm glad to say that we're right on schedule. And I'm going to do it in reverse order, which means that we will start with Charlotte. And again, just a reminder, this is a one-minute closing statement by you.
Well, I really appreciated what does almost seem like a discussion up here tonight. There's so much agreement. Communication is extremely important for board members and sometimes even in board meetings, I'm not hearing uh, what I want to hear, uh, that, which is a, a variety of voices discussing issues to make sure that all stakeholders know that they're being listened to. It's not a battle that we're having. There are hard decisions that school boards make. And it's hard to explain some of those decisions. Budgeting is hard. It's, but I think all, and I'm willing to do that. I'm going to speak for everybody else. That's why we're here. Uh, and we want to do, I want to do this for our community and for our students and for our teachers, the hard workers in our staff who are all out there serving our children to give them the best education that we possibly can.
Hira.
My, my request would be to the community, to students, to the staff, to the teachers, to work as a team. Because we all share the common goal, no matter where we're coming from, no matter what we're thinking, we all share the common goal that to see success, to see our community be successful and to see our students flourish when they are grown up. That will be our own, uh, 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 award for all of us. And then I would just encourage for everybody to support us, to, to support elections, to just go and vote out there. Because without support, there's nothing we can do. I, I would just say that this is the time that we need to make the right choice. We need to just help each other work as a team and just believe in the system that we can do it. We have done that before and we can do it again. It's just coming together as a team and helping each other out.
I'm honored to have the opportunity to do this. I think that all of these other candidates up here are very quality individuals that I would trust any of them to be on the school board. Um, one thing that I want to mention is that whoever does get elected, that compromise goes both ways. And that there's a lot of strong personalities that are not here tonight that either are running or already on the school board. But I think it's important to have everyone be held accountable and, uh, that whoever up here, uh, is able to, you know, not get rolled over and be able to stand up for what's right.
As a member of the school board, I will work hard for our schools to be a place where students will want to be, uh, where they will want to learn, where they can make friends and grow with young men and women to mature into responsible members of our community, no matter what their gender identity, sexual orientation, race, ethnicity, disability, and without fear of being ridiculed or bullied. I want to help create schools that are second to none in the county and possibly even in the state. Schools that the citizens of North Bend can be proud of and which people coming to this area want their kids to attend. With your support and your votes, we can make that happen. Thank you.
And we certainly want to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this forum.